Been crunching numbers this week.
All right, well, good. I can't wait to hear about it.
I'm impressed.
Yeah?
It's banker.
Doesn't take much, does it?
No.
My calculator was a dollar at the dollar store.
It's, tell her, it's like this, it's two. We gotta wait on the. Go ahead. Yeah. That's exactly right. Six oh. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. It's six oh one, and we'll continue right on. We'll welcome you to the February third meeting of the Gastonia City Council, and we're glad you're here. I'd like to, this time, I'll like to have the prayer and the pledge of allegiance, if you'll please stand after the prayer, and then we'll certainly go from there. Pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity of being here today. We thank you. We thank you for this day. We thank you for this life. We thank you for this nation. We thank you for this state. We thank you for this city. We ask that you please be with all those that have lost loved ones in the last few weeks from all walks of life, everywhere. We know they're with you, and we thank you so much for this life. We thank you for this city. We thank you for this council. Help us to make the right decisions, and this staff. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to have at this time the item C, the adoption of the agenda, please.
Motion here, sir.
Second. Is there a second? Okay. Discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of January sixth, twenty fifteen. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion here, sir.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you. Item E is a presentation from Mr. Melvin Burris, president of the upward Howard, excuse me, Highland. You got me all excited with that shirt there. I've already talked to you one time. Upward Highland Foundation, reference and request for in-kind services, the Canis Crank Basketball Tournament, Irvin Center, April sixth through the tenth, twenty fifteen, and folks, that's item E one. Mr. Burris.
All right, good evening. Happy New Year's to everyone. Like the mayor said, I'm here to ask for in-kind service for the Canis Crank Classic. What we asking for is police, fire, and also Irvin Center staff. The days that we were asking for this in-kind service is April the sixth through the tenth, and basically every night from six to ten. This will be our twenty-second year that we've been honoring this thing.
Well, we've seen you every year.
At least twice, sir.
Yeah, right. Okay, questions of Mr. Burris? Is, yes, sir.
How many kids do you usually have?
It runs, I mean, every night we have a hundred to two hundred people a night, and it depends on, like, Friday nights, we kind of let the kids have what we call a roundabout day until the night whoever wins, you know, they win the championship. So it varies from Thursday to Fridays.
Do they pick their own teams, or are they assigned teams?
What we do, we normally lately on Thursday night, we go out to the churches and ask the kids to get involved. So what we'll do is play church night out, which involve kids and adults, and then that Friday, we have a group of kids that play against each other. Whoever win goes to the championship.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Questions, yes, sir?
Melvin, how many trophies do you intend on giving out? I mean, how are we breaking that out? I know that we like to give out a lot of the trophies for the various, you know, the different groups and stuff.
Yes, sir. What we do is with the kids, everybody get us some type of award, okay? And then at that Friday night, we have like from the youth, middle school, high school, and then the championship meeting. So you talking about maybe fifty to sixty trophies.
Thank you. Still I have, sir.
All right, sir. Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Thank you again.
Sir, that shirt worked.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Melvin. Okay, that's item E, presentation. Next is item F, public expression. Each person's limited to a total of five minutes speaking time, and of course, we don't get response from the council. First, I have one, two, three, four, five to speak. Angela Dreher, Redford, nine twenty-one Redford Lane. Angela, there you are. You're a little short. I didn't see you.
I'm tall inside, though.
You are, no doubt about it.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of one of the issues that's going to be on the agenda, which is the consideration of a public hearing for the Martin Luther King Junior Way. I'm a lifelong resident of Gaston County. I was raised on North York Street. My mother still lives on North York Street, and I grew up at a time here when the Highland community was thriving. I went to the credit union and to the restaurants there on Highland. And once a month, I would come to town, which is Main Street, with my great-great-grandfather, who was still alive, who I called Papa, and I had a lot of stories with him about going to the Woolworth and when the stools were removed from the Woolworth store. A lot of history in that community. And of course, we have the Martin Luther King Plaza right there, the corner of Marietta and Long Street, and I thought that I wanted to let you know that it would be befitting for that way for consideration from Franklin down Marietta Street as a lead-in to the Martin Luther King Plaza and as a connector between the communities. Because that track for years stood as a divider. I remember growing up and going to a grim middle school, and my brother and I one afternoon were walking home, and we brought a white girl home from school with us while my Papa was still alive, and he said, "You better get that girl right back across that track before we get in trouble." He didn't understand that times had changed, and I think it would just be a great asset to our community to have a Martin Luther King Way and to have it lead in from Franklin across that track that once kept us divided so that we can now show unity in our community. Thank you.
Angela, thank you very much. And thank you. I'm glad you're open and very active behind us over here. Next is Michael, is it Mac? MacArthur. It's not your name. It's the way you and I write. Thirty twenty-five James Town Drive. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, for allowing me to speak on behalf of the agenda number four for Martin Luther King Way. So into leading up to what Angela has stated that, you know, sometimes times have changed, and sometime we got the roads and how they intersect. So I want to kind of lean into that. So some of the things that I had spoke about, Martin Luther stated that I have a dream. Streets connect us and define our humanity. Their names tell us where we're going, where we work, and where we live, where we play. Streets dedicated to Martin Luther King Junior, they also do those things as well. But not only do they tell us where we work, where we play, where we live, where we like to have fun, it's also a sense of success for what we do life. In America, there's a lot of different things that happens. So for me, I travel, been to Canada, I've been to Kentucky. So when I'm traveling, I look for, you see it all over place, Martin Luther King, the exit. So I've been a resident of Gaston County for twenty years. I moved back here because my wife used to work at Duke Energy and I traveled in a engineering firm. So hearing that we have an opportunity to have Martin Luther King Way, be a part of Marietta, it just means so much. And to hear how it was divided, I don't think we're a county or a city divided at all. I think it'll mean so much if we, the city council and the mayor, make a decision and vote absolutely. That's what we're gonna do on Marietta Way. What would it mean for the young community coming up to see that, no longer divided, in unity, and you talk about I have a dream, still have some struggles, but it shows where we at as a community in Gaston County, that we're moving forward, that things have changed. We're not where we need to be, but you know what? We're moving in that direction. So with that, I think we'll make the right decision, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. The next one on the list is Danielle Barber, Devonwood Court. Ms. Barber?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Bridgman, and the entire council for this opportunity to express my thoughts as relates to renaming a portion of Marietta Street to Martin Luther King Junior Way. Again, my name is Danielle Barber, and I'm asking you to help our city join the ranks of many other cities in North Carolina by declaring Marietta Street from Franklin Boulevard to Walnut Street, Martin Luther King Way. Gastonia is among the top thirteen largest cities in our state, and of those thirteen cities, seventy-five percent of them have a street named after Martin Luther King Junior. Choosing this stretch of Marietta is significant to me and so many others, as you've already heard, because for so many years, the railroad tracks that run along Long Avenue have served as a divide for our community. By selecting this stretch of road, MLK Way will serve as another bridge for our community to show forth the unity and the strides our leaders are making to show forth the progress we are making as a community. How wonderful it would be for our visitors as well as our citizens to drive down Franklin Boulevard and have the opportunity to make a right or to turn left onto MLK Junior Way. It will speak volumes to all and show forth the opportunities of what our city is really about, and as we continue to brand our city for the better. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Mr. James Biggers, Oakwood Street. Mr. Biggers?
Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. If this could happen, I think it would complete a cycle for me personally. I had the opportunity to meet the King family, Dr. King, Thurgood Marshall, some years ago, back in sixty-three, in fact. Not understanding what was coming about, what was gonna occur, it did happen. I see this as, again, the city of Gastonia itself becoming a leader in a way. And by completing this, this is my cycle, my personal cycle, but by completing it, I can move on to the next job I have. And again, we would love to have that vote in, everything being positive, and may need to have a parade, too, somewhere along there, if we can do that. But thank you so much. I just had to speak in favor of this. This is just something that has to happen. It's for us. It's for the whole city and all visitors coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Biggers. Next, Mr. Edward D. Sadler Junior, Scarborough Court. Dr. Sadler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, good evening. I'm pleased to have an opportunity to stand before you on this occasion. As an individual who grew up in this community, Gastonia had the distinction of not having many of the problems that other cities experienced during the time that we were really facing integration. It was peaceful here in Gaston, Gastonia. When I went off to school in Durham and talked with my friends, people that I met, and listened to some of the stories that they had to tell about things that happened as far as the unrest and all that occurred within their communities, that didn't happen in Gastonia. It was very peaceful. I do remember, however, the initial that we gathered at Saint Stephen's Amy's Iron Church, right down here on Marietta Street, North Marietta Street, and it was very important that we distinguished between north and south, but North Marietta Street, where marches began as we were preparing to integrate the movie theaters. And I think that the naming or renaming of Marietta Street to Martin Luther King Way would be very significant in that it bridges what was two separate parts of our city into one. I hope that you will give favorable consideration to the renaming of Marietta Street, those portions of Marietta Street to Martin Luther King Way, or I know that we've talked about from Franklin to Walnut, but I would say from Franklin to Dallas, if that was a possibility. And I'm not trying to push my luck, but I'm just saying that there are probably fewer businesses and fewer reasons beyond Walnut, I mean, to not, I mean, not to stop there at Walnut, because you don't have all of the other concerns that I think that some people have voiced. But I appreciate the leadership that this council has provided and that you're providing, and I appreciate the fact that you're even considering this at this time. As Danielle indicated earlier in her comments, there are many, many, many cities in this state and in this nation that have already taken that step, and I strongly urge you and encourage you to also be a leader in that realm. Thank you very much for the opportunity to stand before you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sadler. And that's all that we have on the sign-up sheet for the public expression. Thank you, everyone, for being here on this, too. Next is the, on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, one, two, three, and four?
I'd like to pull forward.
Okay, is there a motion to approve one, two, and three?
Some of.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor of the consent agenda, raise your hand, please. Okay. Item number four is on the consent agenda. We'll discuss it first before we get to the regular agenda. Resolution setting public hearing date on renaming of a portion of Marietta Street to Martin Luther King Junior Way. Yes, sir, Mr. McEachran?
Okay. I have talked to people standing, we got an email from the county manager. It's concerned about the expense that we're gonna have with the, all the different departments. They have human resources and, not human resources, yeah, the social services, we got on the insurance department, the courthouse, and all the different departments in there, and all the expenses they're gonna have to go through with redoing forms, letterheads and all that. It costs quite a few thousand dollars. So they suggested, and I support, going from Chester Street to Broad Street and name that Martin Luther King Junior Way. I know there are a lot of people don't want to do that. Let me say that I know the history of Marietta. I go way, Marietta Street, I go way back to sitting on the porch of Charlie Koster Junior and his daddy, Charlie Koster Senior, at the funeral home, and many times in the church on Marietta, crossing the courthouse parking lot. I spent a lot of time over there, a lot of churches in the black community, in North Island, and Big Daddy's and all around. I've been through a lot of it in the years past. But I don't want the city to vote, to put a financial burden on the county, but on Long Avenue, all the entities on Long Avenue, the businesses, well, not really businesses, like the police department and the ABC Store, the Housing Authority, or ours, and so I don't mind voting, putting expense on them for this, and that would be probably much more, much, I think you'd see a lot more traffic on Long Avenue, which recognize Martin Luther King Junior Way there than you would on Marietta. And so I would hope that we would consider putting, if you'd like in the public hearing, putting both names, possibly both names, or both roads on the public hearing, and let the public have a chance to speak to both instead of just putting one on the public hearing. And that's what I would like to do, if the council would consider letting the public address both streets, Marietta and Long Avenue, for the public hearing. Let the public address both of them.
Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Gallagher?
Well, it sounds nice and all, but from what I've heard from some of the public here recently, Angela Dare said that the tracks represent a separation, and by naming Martin Luther King for Long Avenue there is almost like putting up apartheid again. It's a separation. Whereas Marietta, you know, figuratively speaking, you know, crosses the bridge over there, and it's a bridge for two sides when it comes up Marietta. It's adjoining the city, not separating the city, whereas what you're thinking of doing. You know, I just feel that, you know, a bridge for, it would be a bridge for civil rights and better relations for all. Someone said, I think it was Angela again, she said, unity for community, and I like that a real lot. And, you know, we are the thirteenth largest city in North Carolina, and this is surprising to find that we do not have a Martin Luther King Way or a street, and seventy-five percent of the other cities do have it, and I appreciate you saying that, Mrs. Barber. You know, and it needs to be done. I just, you know, I don't think we're gonna be putting an undue burden for printing cost on the county if we say we do it in six months' time. I mean, they could use up all their supplies that they need to use, and they could do, start doing their reordering, and say July first comes, the street name would be changed, and we could have some type of celebration. I think most of the public has spoken, and a lot of people who signed up are for it, and I think you'll hear the same thing at the next time we have a public meeting, but I believe it should stay as Marietta. Thank you.
Dr. Carlin?
Mr. Mayor, I think the purpose here is to, as we say, it says, resolution setting a public hearing date. That's all we're talking about, okay? The details of what shall happen is immaterial to this discussion, so can we move on?
No, sir, I disagree with you, sir.
No, what I'm suggesting is, well, let me finish. Let me finish. What I'm suggesting is we're looking for a resolution setting a public hearing date, okay? We're getting into the meat of the discussion. That's not the purpose for this consent. If Mr. McEachran would like to make a suggestion during the public hearing to make a change to the location of Martin Luther King Junior Way, Mr. Gallagher wants to make his comments relative to the, you know, the reason for the location, that's all during the public hearing. So I'm suggesting we just move on, get this public hearing on board as is recommended. I mean, I support this resolution completely, but why are we discussing this now? That's what the public hearing is for.
May I answer your question?
Of course.
And it could be me, it could be him, it could be you. It happened to be you. We're not at the last meeting, but by law, the way that this is set up and what we have here is that at the last meeting, we discussed, there has to be a hearing tonight at the second meeting, but on the seventeenth, he has, Mr. Smith has to advertise in the paper, and he has to put what the address is. He can't put either or. It's either gonna be one or the other. So basically, we got to decide, is it going to be tonight, and then it's advertised by law, and then it's in the paper. Is that correct, sir?
We could do either or. We have never done it that way before. We have always picked one. All the ads before have always said, from A to B is going to be considered as the name change, so that you give notice to all of the people along the street whose address will possibly be changed, that the public hearing is going to be on that section of the road. So that is the way. It's always been only one section. This is not a state law requirement. This is a city policy. So we could advertise that saying that there will be a public hearing to consider A or B, because it is a city policy. It is not a state law. Let me just respond by saying, if there was this much concern, then why was it put on the consent agenda tonight and not on the regular agenda for discussion then? I thought we were just kind of trying to get along with the process.
Well, my answer to that is we were, but it is on the consent agenda, and it was taken off tonight, right before us, right here. I didn't know. Here it is. The, I mean, there's been a big article in the paper. There's been this and that and so on, and everything that these folks have said certainly are true. And I have a question that, I didn't interrupt you anymore. You okay? I'm fine, okay. To the city manager. And it's probably not gonna come out as a pleasant question, but you and I have seen those before. You can have it. The emails that we received as a council, all of us together, I don't understand, and I want you to help me with this. It says, I just, this is from you to us. It's dated the other day. It says, there it is, February second at five sixteen p.m. I just received this a few minutes ago. The county, the county, is asking us to designate Long Avenue as MLK Avenue from US three twenty-one to Broad Street. That's a very important statement right there. This designation would only affect the addresses of the city's ABC Store, Housing Authority, Water Plant, Police Station. Please let me know if you have any questions. That is from the city manager to the mayor and the council. Now, let's read underneath what you received just a few minutes before that, four thirty-three that day. Ed, I understand that your board approved the renaming of a portion of Marietta to Martin Luther King Street Way. While we certainly, this is from Mr. Earl Mathers, the county manager next door, up the street. While we certainly understand the merit of recognizing the contributions of a great civil rights leader, we believe that this will have significant cost impact for Gaston County. Of course, they have a printing department, printing, he didn't mention that, but, okay. For example, it will be necessary for us to print new stationery and business cards. And, oh, Lord, and change addressing on various forms and make a variety of other adjustments. Now, I want you to listen to this question, and here's your question right here. A suggestion from one of our, one of our commissioners. Now, he says, one of our commissioners. from one of our, one of our commissioners. Now, he says, one of our commissioners would be to rededicate a portion of Long Avenue instead. In any case, I did not want to raise our concern about the financial impact of this change of Gaston County. And, you know, we're all together. We're Gaston County too, you know. They're the ones that wanted to raise it up, how they were going to collect our taxes, and they won't pay it for the shield, and that's things like that, you know. And they won't let us vote on the EDC, but let's take care of them. Now, where did you get this statement? Where did you get the statement that it said, from US 321 to Broad Street? Mr. Mathers doesn't say that. Where, is that just something you thought of, or where did it come from?
I think they said Long Avenue, didn't they?
It says Long Avenue.
So I assumed that it meant, you know, it can be all of Long Avenue, but I don't know. Because the first time I saw that was, I think he sent it around 4:30. And so, yeah. And so I wanted the council to know what the county was thinking, and I sent it to all of you last night, so that you had it. And ask you if you had any questions, call me, and nobody did. So just, you know, it's there.
Well, it would affect us too, of course, because I was just told by Mr. McEachran that we own ABC, and we own Housing Authority. We don't. I don't know where that came from. But we own Police Station. And I'm just trying to put it all together, and I just don't understand why this has come up. I've heard it before.
Yeah, it's, yeah. I think it's pretty simple. The county is the one that's requesting that we do long, because it impacts the city and doesn't impact them. That's why they came into, now, I've not had any direct conversation past, you know, with any of the commissioners. I don't know if it represents all the commissioners. This thing came in late last night. Just wanted to send it to the city council. If you go back 10 years ago or so, it was the city of Gastonia that led the way to actually, the bridge is called Martin Luther King Bridge on Marietta. And when we did that, and we did it, the city of Gastonia did it, remember Dr. Carlin? And the county was so enamored with what we had done, they said they wanted to expand it and create the plaza. And then beyond that, they said, let's have an I Have a Dream monument there. And the city paid for part of that monument, and paid for the, and renamed the bridge for the very reason that we're talking about here. So now we talk about expanding that along Marietta, which is certainly fine. And the city council can change the names of streets anytime. And just as the city attorney mentioned, what we usually worry about with, when you make name changes, is how it affects businesses and homes, and how they have to change their addresses. Usually, it has to do with, when we were doing a lot of annexation. So this is a little, this is a little different, and it's something that's really an extension of really what the city did 10 years ago. So what I was giving to all the city council was the correspondence that the county gave to me. I certainly didn't think that I should withhold it from the council, that instead I should share it with the mayor and city council. I hope that clarifies it for you.
No, sir. I just, it does to a point. But where did you pick from US 321 to Broad Street? Was that just something you thought of?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you think it was from some other source?
I've heard it before.
From where?
I've...
I mean, I didn't talk, I didn't talk to anybody.
Well, and I never thought of it before, but I, you know. Well, that's good, because you've been, you've been going, and that's good. That's fine. The, let's talk about it just a second, ladies and gentlemen. Franklin Avenue. Now, I don't know about Mr. Wells Fargo here, but I do know that there, in the phone book, it says 100 or whatever West Franklin. So that means they, but then the conference center is ours. That's the city.
Right.
And Mr. Phillips, the attorney up on Main, he's on Main, his dress, address is, and our bondsman, and then we get to the courthouse, and we get to DSS, as has been mentioned. Now, the maintenance and the streets and the sidewalks and all out in front of the courthouse and the DSS, who maintains, who maintains that problem?
The general maintenance around a courthouse done by the county?
No, no. I mean, the sidewalks and the street, like the Marietta street, who maintains?
That's the city.
That's the city. Well, do you know for a fact, and I don't, but I was told, do they have a, that's the county? Well, let's start, let's, does the city have a printing department, or do we feed it out?
Yeah, we don't really have the old printing press and printing department like we used to. Nowadays, with the, with the new systems that we have, you know, we produce it in-house. And so really, that is not as much of a problem. In fact, most of the information that comes to us is through the post office box, you know, and the postal office box 1748. I don't really know how the county specifically addresses, or the state, you know, with the courthouse and the jail and the social services. I don't know. I don't know if, what they, whether they use the street address, or whether they use the post office box. But we mostly use post office box. I think the police department probably uses the street address, right? Yeah, street address.
I can only say in closing, okay, and comment, but I'm going to be personal, is that we're trying to get there. I consider, I would consider, if I were a county commissioner or an employee of either, to have on my stationery Martin Luther King Junior Way. It's just that simple. Who's raising their hand? Ms. Craig and Mr. Gallagher and Dr. Carlin? Okay, go ahead.
I would just like to say that, that stationary cost, printing cost, I've heard that as an excuse for years now, okay, on different things, okay, not just from the county, but from other. That's always seems to be, don't, don't give me an incurred cost that you're not going to pay for, okay? Well, that's a one-time thing. If they have to change their stationery with a different address, if they don't have a PO box, that's a one-time expense. It's not a reoccurring expense, budget year, budget year, budget year, okay? So I really can't buy into that being a legitimate reason not to name Marietta Martin Luther King Junior Way. If it is named Martin Luther King Junior Way, that is a name that will be there for who knows how long, okay? Street signs will have to be changed. Doesn't the city pay for that?
Yes.
Okay. So the city's going to have some incurred cost anyway. The county's not going to be the only one that's going to have a cost involved in this. So, you know, I think it's unrealistic to think that it's going to cost so much if it gets changed. It's going to cost so much to change stationery over, like what Councilman Gallagher said, over a period of time, okay? Because this isn't going to happen on the 17th after the public hearing, and everything just all of a sudden gets changed to Martin Luther King Way. It's going to be a progression of transitioning through that and getting street names and things like that. So I don't know what you, what we need at this point, Mr. Mayor, but, you know, I would like to make a motion, if we're at a point of making a motion, of naming the street from Franklin Boulevard, from Franklin, Marietta, to Walnut, the Martin Luther King Way, and adopt the resolution that is before us tonight.
I will last for a second on that, and then we have discussion. You have, we have a second discussion, and I believe we'll start right here and go down, because that's how you raised your hands.
Councilwoman Craig, you're exactly right. It costs something. It'll cost us something. It'll cost the county something. But look what it costs Martin Luther King Junior. I mean, man, was the only non-elected official that changed the whole country in a peaceful manner. And the African-American communities come forward and asked us to change the name to the street. We shouldn't balk at this whatsoever. And it is going to cost us something, but that's fine. It cost him everything. Thank you.
Dr. Carlin?
Well, yeah, just what you said earlier, Mayor, I just was going to stand up and applaud you, because I'd be proud to have my county administration buildings and those other facilities with that address on them, you know. And I think that's impactful. So, as well as the fact that I think the US Postal Service knows where those buildings are regardless of their address. So I don't really think that's much of an issue either. I don't think we're going to have a lot of lost mail as a result of that. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kimball?
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilwoman Craig, I would ask, however, that you consider adding Martin Luther King Junior, I believe, is, would be the correct connotation on the street sign versus Martin Luther King, I believe. So I would ask...
I'll make that the amendment.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
I would make the amendment to name it Martin Luther King Junior Way.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
That's how it's printed in our agenda. So your motion is to approve the resolution as written in our agenda. So I think that would handle that, but...
Pardon me?
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing. Yes, that's exactly the resolution.
And Councilman Gallagher really said what I wanted to say, and that there's going to be a cost anytime you rename a street. But when you think about not only the man, Martin Luther King Junior, but everyone else that fought for civil rights and that kind of thing, what cost did they pay? And it's really a couple of business cards and stationery. Are we really trying to compare that and say it's equal? I mean, that's just embarrassing to me. But second, I wanted to, and I won't get into it, because it'll be at the public hearing, but Dr. Sather, you may get your way, because I have a business that is on North Marietta, and it is in a building, and the owner of that building asked, why is it stopping at Walnut? Why cannot not come down further? And I said, well, the public hearing won't be till our next meeting, but we welcome you to come in, and I can certainly support that if you feel that. But they want it to extend all the way. Some of the businesses past Walnut would like to see us extend it to the Dallas line. So I'm not going to rule that out, Dr. Sather.
It's not far to Dallas.
And, you know, our ballpark is right there. I'd be proud to say that Simms ballpark is on Martin Luther King Junior Way.
So I'm going to revise the ad then, to allow for that possibility, okay?
We will have some business owners asking that we extend it. I do know that at the public hearing. I told them to show up at the public hearing when it's advertised. So I do know that.
Okay. At this point, there is a motion and a second to proceed on with the resolution. And two weeks from tonight, it will be voted on after it's advertised in the, in the media. Is that pretty much it on that? All right. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, please. Opposed? It is unanimous, Ms. Grayton. And so, folks, it's the, it'll be over, that, over on Martin Luther King Way Junior, over on the, no, it'll be, it'll be over at the courthouse, two weeks from tonight, at the 17th, and that'll be the final, the motion at that time will be made of whatever, is, will be approved and may put into law then, at that time. We're going through the procedures tonight. We have discussed it, and so we'll, we'll be ready for, on the 17th, you'll do the advertising. Yes, sir, Mr. Kimball, Councilman Kimball?
I just wanted to say, everybody else got to say a whole heck of a lot on this, and I just felt left out. Ideally, what I also see from this is the, you know, we're attempting to rebrand our conference center. We have new management. We have a new outlook. We've even bantered around maybe having a new name. And I think that making a new address with this re-energized conference center, and what that name represents to many generations is befitting what we want for our conference center, I think. And I think that speaks a volume of where we want to go collectively as a community. And I know that you're here, Mr., I think Mr. Julius is here.
Yeah, he's by there.
And I know that you're going to embrace this change as well. Thank you.
Well put. Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Now, we're going to the regular agenda, since the consent agenda is done. Item five is award of contract for repair, painting, and maintenance of the South Five Million-Gallon Water Storage Tank Utility Services Company, $158,883. Presentation, Mr. Matt Bernhardt, Director of Public Works and Utilities. Probably top the last one.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Coming after that, I'm not sure what I should say for this. This is clearly not as significant as that. But as I know you're aware, in 2009, the city of Gastonia contracted with the tank maintenance firm of Utility Service Incorporated for the painting and maintenance of our tanks, our two elevated storage tanks. And by any standard, it's been a tremendous success. They did an excellent job. The appearance of the tanks was vastly improved. The maintenance has been effective. And the, however, at the time that we contracted with Utility Service, they did not do concrete ground storage tanks. Since that time, they have moved into that area as well. And as you're also, I'm sure, aware, the city of Gastonia has a five million gallon ground storage tank, a concrete storage tank on the south mountain. And we would like to add, and would recommend adding that to the maintenance agreement with Utility Service. They have done a good job. As the memo that you have in your packet says, the funds are available within the budget, and the agreement has been approved, reviewed and approved by city legal staff. So the staff recommends that the council approve the contracts with Utility Services Incorporated in the amount of $158,883.
Questions to Mr. Bernhardt. Mr. Gallagher?
Matt, have they found any repairs that have to be done to it? Is there, you know, is it leaking?
Councilman, the staff had Utility Service do a study and a review of the tank in the preparation of this agreement, and they did find a number of needs, as any concrete structure would have of that age and period. None threatened the structure if addressed. But there are, there are needs there and issues to be addressed, such that we certainly consider it a priority to get this tank under a regular maintenance program with a firm with the expertise that Utility Service Incorporated has.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Craig?
Uh, Mr. Bernhardt, have we used this company before?
We have.
So they've done work for the city of Gastonia in the past?
Yes, ma'am. They currently maintain our two elevated storage tanks, the large million-gallon elevated storage tanks that we have, the East and West Tanks, as they're called. And I think anyone that has seen them would agree that they did a very excellent job resurfacing and repainting those tanks. And they've been good to work with. Staff is extremely satisfied.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
They're in Atlanta, right?
They, one of their offices is out of Atlanta.
Okay. Yes.
Matt, I'm looking at the numbers. Matt, I'm looking at the numbers.
Yes, sir.
The $158,883 for the next seven years is the total cost?
Yes, sir.
And then it goes on to say that the sum to be paid by the city is in three equal annual payments of $39,981. When I times that by three equal payments of $39,000, I'm getting $119,000. And then it goes on to say, "Beginning after the completion of the initial repairs and painting, four equal payments of $112,480." So, I mean, not 112, just 12,980. That comes to additional, let's see, 12,980 times four, 51,000. So, when I add the 51 to the 119, 943, I'm getting a total of 171. Is there a difference? Where is my math fuzzy?
Councilman, not sure as far as your, the math you're doing. I do know the total volume, the total amount of the contract was $158,853, and that was the arrangement that we had with Utility Service. So, we certainly would not exceed that amount in total.
And that's each year for the next seven years?
No, sir. That would be-
For the total seven years?
Right, for the total.
Sounds good. Okay.
Are you thinking you're going to ask?
Thank you. Councilman Gallagher brings up a good question, though.
We'll check those prices. I mean, it's our understanding that's the maximum, but I think-
Right.
-points raised. We'll be careful that that contract reflects that.
Yes, sir.
And that it's not something other than what is stated here.
Yeah, it's not the 121. It's actually 171. It's actually the 158.
So, my question is, though, if we vote to approve this legal, are we voting to approve 158,883, or are we voting to approve?
Expect the motion to approve the contract at 158,883.
Thank you. Because I was like, if the other is more, and we vote to approve this whole thing, where does that take us? So, okay. I will make the motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second here, please.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion?
My motion is for the 158,883.
Correct.
Let me take a second. Mr. Munn, if you would, would you introduce the sort of funny-looking fellow beside-
Yes.
-Mr. Bernhardt down there?
I was going to do, I was going to do that under my, yeah, under my report, but I'd be happy to-
Oh, you're going to do, well, go ahead and do it now, if you-
Okay, Michael.
Since they're sitting out there.
Right. It's our pleasure to introduce to you Michael Peoples, and who formerly the manager of Cramertown, is now our Enterprise Services Director. And we're really pleased to have Michael working with us. He has been working with us on our utilities and working with us in planning and roads and in so many different ways. And we know Michael, and it's wonderful to keep him as a resource. His wife is a teacher assistant principal at Hunter Hus.
That's correct.
So, she's also of this community, and we're very, very pleased to have Michael here. Michael, if you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you.
About an hour and a half or something.
Work out some math real quick. That was sort of scary. But, yeah, after seven, after seven days of being on the job, I guess I'm taking a new phrase of sponging. I'm just taking it all in as much as I can, attending a lot of meetings and getting to know the fine folks in Gastonia, several, several folks, more than Cramertown. But as the city manager said, I've lived in Gaston County for 10 years, and my wife is assistant principal. This is her fourth year at Hunter Hus, so looking forward to continuing our involvement, participation in Gaston County and Gastonia. And I appreciate the nod of coming on board and joining a winning team, so look forward to working with all of you.
Mike, it's good to have you. It took me two years, and this fellow here, to pronounce Paul's last name. I can handle people. You got it, so. But welcome, and we're glad you're here, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ed.
Next month, I'll be there.
Yes.
Write it out.
Item six is North Carolina Department of Transportation Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Supplemental Agreement for Design and Construction of the Leinberger/Downtown Pedestrian Connector. Presentation, Mr. Rusty Boss, Director of City Engineer, Director of Engineer and City Engineer, Clemson University. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Downtown Leinberger Connector project is well underway. It's currently in the design phase. We're getting very close to having 100% construction plans, so we're getting ready to get through all the approval processes, processes with DOT. The original contract with DOT had a final completion date. That means all the work done, all the paperwork consented to DOT, and DOT issuing us a check back for March 31st of this year. We're simply not going to make that with the time that we have left and the work that we have left to do and the overview and the review and the regulations that we have to jump through, as well as construction. It's just not going to happen. We're looking right now at November of this year, I think, is when we'll be complete with this project. So, we asked NC DOT to extend the contract out, that extra amount of time. They sent back to us the supplemental agreement. They didn't seem to have any problem with that. They seemed to be very accommodating with our request. I think some of that might be because a lot of the reviews are on their side, and so that's where some of the delay has happened. Their current processes for doing reimbursement agreements with municipalities is that they're, because all of these projects across the state are having these huge delays in review processes, and every one of them is coming in late, they're extending the reimbursement agreements out now to the very maximum end of the funding cycle for the projects, which is a five-year cycle from the date that the agreement is signed. So, in the agreement that they sent us, the final completion date is November of 2018. That's not going to happen. We're going to be done with this in November, but that's why that date is there. That is simply DOT's new process for how they do these reimbursement agreements. It's a good project. It's moving forward. Again, I think we're going to be done with this in November of this current year, if not sooner. It all depends on how quickly the reviews happen, but staff recommends approval of this supplemental agreement. If I had to answer any questions?
Questions for Mr. Boss?
One question. Does DOT, does the D stand for delay? Just curious.
I should stay quiet.
Okay. The other thing is, Rusty, when it said connector, I was thinking of the item that, under the greenway for Leinberger Park.
Yes.
And I went through there, and there's only one light working down there. I mean, there's like four supposedly supposed to work.
Oh.
And I was wondering if someone, if we can get some people that have to do community service, if they can get down here with a shovel and a wheelbarrow, get that sand out of there, because it's pretty, you know, it could be done up a little bit nicer than what it is. It needs to be maintained, is what I'm getting at.
It's lights and the sand has built up both.
Yeah, both.
Yeah, it's our job to maintain that.
Yes.
And it's, it does, because it's built underneath. It's really essentially a storm drain.
Right.
So, it catches it, but it needs to be maintained regularly.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Rusty, usually the councilman's ward does it, keeps it up pretty well, too, right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Is your ward?
Goes over my ward, or under my ward.
Under your ward, okay. All right. Any other questions, Rusty?
I'll make the motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor? Thank you, sir. Item seven is Mr. Ed Munn, City of Gastonia, 2015 Advocacy Agenda. That's item number seven.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this advocacy agenda is basically the same thing we talked about last meeting. This is here for approval. Some of the things that we talked about at our last meeting on page two, under economic development, this was mentioned by Councilman Pierceall, support legislation for the General Assembly reauthorization of the now-expired film industry tax credit and grants program. So, we added that one. Mr. Gallagher, Councilman Gallagher mentioned, this is on page three, making sure that we have I-85 U.S. 321, and the first indent there says, "Assure the prioritized expedited funding, design, and construction of capacity-upgraded and reconfigured I-85 U.S. 321 interchange." So, we're priority to get that thing going and expedite it. On page four, under public safety, there is, this is something that Councilman Kimball mentioned. This is the first bullet item. In addition, the city supports legislation creating federal-state grant funding to help offset the initial capital investment and subsequent annual operation and maintenance costs related to implementing the local police body camera. So, we added that. And then finally, we had a discussion at the end about mopeds. And as you all recall, we said, "Well, we knew the legislature did something, but we thought they didn't go all the way." So, now, what we, what we have is, and I think Ash has already sent this to you, and I've just made a copy, and also a copy of the newspaper. And this begins with Stephanie Webster, who is the police attorney, who sent this to Ash after he asked for clarification, and said that mopeds changed last year. It doesn't go into effect until July 1st, 2015. Now, what that change is, and I have highlighted it here, mopeds must be registered with the DMV, and the moped owner must pay the same base fee and be issued the same type of registration card and plate for the motorcycle. This is in the statutes now, and this will be effective first day of July 2015. Then they went on to say this, "The Joint Legislative Transportation Oversight Committee must study whether additional statutory changes are needed to ensure moped safety, safe operation, including whether insurance should be required." So, they weren't sure, so they gave it to a study committee. The committee must report to the 2015 legislative session, which is going on now. So, then moving to the next page, which is the, really, the part of the newspaper and the Gazette where they, there was a summary of what was going on with the whole moped issue, and it was a good one. At the bottom here, the DMV recommendation. So, DMV is recommending three things this year to the Legislative Study Commission. And the first one is requiring insurance, and you can see that they're talking about minimum is $68, and if you have 12 points on your license, it'd be $450. The second one is DWI prohibit anyone from operating a moped who has revoked, suspended, or denied license due to DWI or for medical reasons. Then the third recommendation that they have is that no mopeds should be on roads with higher speed limits, and this is really 45 miles an hour or greater. Then there's a little discussion, and notice, both of our legislators, one, the, I want to call him Commissioner Torbit, but Representative Torbit, is one of the co-chairs of the Transportation Committee, and he expresses some concern about that middle item, which is if you had a DWI, he said, "We don't want to negate these folks a way to get to their jobs during the living." Then you go down a little bit further, and there's discussion from Mr. Bumgardner, and he's kind of, he's talking about the same thing. So, one of the things I think we should talk about is what kind of language, because we're ready to approve this, would the council want to add to the moped? Do you like all three of these recommendations from the, from the state, from the DMV, or do you like only two of them? How would you like us to word it? Because we could put that wording in, plus you, what we have, you've already reviewed, and then approve that tonight, if that's the council's desire.
Like all three? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make one more point, and I agree with Councilman Pierceall, but what was also very telling was, I believe it was the next day, Monday, the Gazette put out a poll, and specifically in that poll, it said, "What rules do you favor for moped riders, drivers?" And 89%, one of the highest ratios I've ever seen in a poll, was that it should be all three, or, I'm sorry, all of the above. Insurance, license, wear a helmet, and 16 years or older. Okay? And I have that if anybody'd like to see it. So, I think that speaks very broadly about what our community thinks about the safety of these vehicles, and I think, Councilman Pierceall, you're right on. We need to go with them all. Thank you.
And I have this part, if anybody'd like to see it. Dave, there's a question.
I was just going to say the same thing, is that, that none of these are overly-
Burdensome.
Burdensome, thank you, sir. That, they just make sense. It's common sense, okay? And this is, this is what I would like to see us support, too, is 100% of the three that the department is recommending.
Yes, sir.
I think all three, like I said, but, and I don't know how you want to word it, but, and Chief Alton, you may want to comment on this. Maybe it's true that where Representative Bumgardner and Torbit live, that they use mopeds to get to work. I don't know. But in my particular ward, I can promise you, most of the mopeds that are going up and down the street, they're not going to work. They've committed a crime, and they're on that moped to get away. They can go down sidewalks, on the greenways. I'm not saying legally. They've already committed a crime. They're getting away. They go down the sidewalks, the greenways, through yards, anywhere a police car can't follow them. They do it day and night. Am I wrong, chief? And I'm not saying everyone on a moped's a crook. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, and I know they use them.
I don't know if I'll interfere into that conversation. They, mopeds are used for a variety of reasons. I would be in support of the DMV recommendations themselves.
So, I don't know if we could add something from, you know, a law enforcement standpoint to that, to emphasize that it's, A, it's a danger on the road to other people if they're not insured, and especially a danger to themselves, because right up from my porch, I watched a car hit a moped.
Well, there are three, three things with the DMV, and actually, two of the other things about the helmet and age 16, I don't think were included in this. Do you want to put all, all of those together? Okay. Well, we would recommend you approve the, if that's a consensus, the council recommend that you approve the advocacy agenda with the addition of the advocacy for the moped legislation that includes the three from the DMV and the other two. Yes?
I would just like to bring up also that the email that we got recently this week about the urban counties and cities pay, take some of the money that we get and give it to rural-
The redistribution of sales tax from-
Shifting, is what, yeah. I think we need to add that we would not be in support of that, because we would be losing money, right?
Yes. It depends upon that, what they, I mean, it depends upon what formula they use, but surely, because Gaston County is normally considered an urban county, but we're also not a wealthy county.
That's right.
So, if you do it on income, it might not be so bad. If they did it rural, urban, then it would be. But we don't want to lose any more. We've lost so much sales tax already to the county, yeah. Okay, well, we should-
I mean, I don't know where-
We don't want redistribution of wealth, is what it comes, you know, I feel like you do, Councilwoman Craig, the redistribution of wealth, I mean, just because, you know, Mecklenburg, you know, they're charging X amount, and they're getting so much money. I mean, they're also spending a lot of money also, and, you know, you need to manage what you have. And I think we've done that. I don't want, you know, we are the 13th largest city in North Carolina. They'll, they'll be looking at us like, you know, we have a boatload of cash. And I really, you know, someone else is, other cities are just going to have to do what they have to do, and they should keep what they earn.
It might go under economic development or something like that, but-
If under, under financial at the very beginning, there is a section that said, "Current local sales tax formula does not fairly distribute revenues to cities."
Oh, that's-
Even though 75% of sales take place within municipalities, the current sales tax system returns only 30% of the revenues to cities. We could expand that and say that if there's a new distribution formula, we should not be adversely affected. In Gastonia, we're not a wealthy community. We don't want to be adversely affected. Something, add that in.
Yeah, I would be in support of that.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, I think so.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve the advocacy agenda, including the comments made by Councilwoman Craig and the moped discussion, to include those three items plus the two that weren't listed from DMV.
And I will second your motion, Councilman Pierceall.
Discussion. All in favor? Please raise your hand right here. Thank you. Good unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item eight is a Facilities Management Committee Meeting Report. Mayor Protimber and the Craig Chairperson, that's your item number eight, Exhibit Eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It, the-
It, uh, the, uh, report begins on eight dash one. And we had our meeting on Tuesday, January the twenty-seventh. Dr. Curlin and Councilman Pierceall are on that committee, and we had some really, really good conversation during that committee meeting. This report has about thirty-three pages in it, so hopefully you have gone through this and seen, if you have any questions or anything about, anything that, that I'm gonna report on. I'm not gonna go through all this, this, uh, summary. But the last paragraph under item one, under discussion, the very last paragraph, "The committee requested that the following be provided at the next meeting on March 4th, 2015." Okay? Number one, a copy of the Sumner Group contract and package. Number two, a listing of financial need, of facility needs, excuse me, including maintenance and capital items, along with a timeline of when these issues will be fixed. Also, the committee requested that representatives of the, of the Sumner Group be present at the next meeting to discuss their services to the conference center. So from the financial end of it, if you have any questions, if you've gone through some of this, then, uh, Mr. Julius is here, and he will be happy to answer any of those financial questions.
I, I, I may, I may want to withdraw. Councilwoman Craig, are you gonna do separately a, the facility as an item? There, there's a section where they went through a lot of the issues of facility with the Gastonia Conference Center. Is that gonna be separate? Because that's where one of my, my, actually, my questions to Mr. Julius and...
I don't know if you're sure of what he's, what you're talking about.
Right here in the report, um, it's exhibit, uh, eight dash eight.
Eight dash what?
Eight.
No, I was not going through that, uh, specifically, but if you've got any questions that you would like to, uh, address to Mr. Julius, then, then that's fine with me.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. This would be appropriate timing, thank you. Actually, several things, Mr. Julius. First of all, and Flip, this may also go, or add to your area of expertise as well. Under facility, I noted the roofing damage and dry rotted rubber flashing and piping covers discovered, and I wanted to see if we could conduct some fact-finding. I would think that this isn't a very old building to have that type of damage, and I'd like to see if we have any type of roofing warranty on that, and that's obviously not something that we need to know right now, but certainly that's something that, you know, frankly, it, it shouldn't be failing at this point. Number two, with Mr. Julius, how are we working towards a, a matrix with the travel and tourism representative, Mr. Owen? How, how, how are things going there?
To be honest, we, it's, it's been a little difficult. We've tried to reach out, actually, the sales and marketing department of the Gastonia Conference Center, under my leadership, has tried to reach out to Mr. Owens, and we have done a couple of attempts, but we've not been able to get together. It may be he's getting, getting involved, understanding, fact-finding. I'm not putting those words in his mouth, I'm just saying that we have not had the opportunity to converse.
What I would hope that we could move towards in the future is uniting of, of some of the goals and objectives between the two, because I think they have the potential to complement one another, and I, I would like to see us continue to work on that, and hopefully some joint efforts between the two.
We would look forward to that.
That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes.
The one thing the conference center really, truly needs, is when someone's up there doing a presentation, we need some type of spotlight that spotlights on the speaker themselves. I was at a item just recently for the realtors, and they, they were up there on a podium, and, you know, a spotlight focusing on the speaker generally allows you to see them a little bit better from where I was at, and I just think that's something that we need to look forward to and put into our budget.
Yes, sir, we'll take a look at that.
Do you notice anything like that?
Oh, absolutely. We've had requests in the past. I'm not really sure through the electrical design phase why, because most, most conference centers, most ballrooms, would have spotlights to identify certain locations and/or guest speakers. And so we, what we've had to do in the past is actually rent portable units.
Gotcha.
We'll, we'll take a look at it for the next fiscal year.
Thank you, sir.
And, and that's something, not just Fred's management operation, that's something that maybe the city should look at, because from an ownership standpoint, I mean, in, in the Facilities Management Committee meeting, we had a lot of discussion about ballast going out, and electrical, and I was, if we're going in and looking at all this stuff, and we need to add some lights here and there, now would be the time to do it. You know, so...
The, and you know, we were talking about the roof, the roof issue, which is, you know, the surprise, was a surprise to us. We, we're really, you know, as the building owner, that's the kind of thing that we're really responsible for. They're managing it, but these kind of improvements and/or things like that are something that really would fall to the city, and we will take a look at that, price those things, and try to get, get that addressed. And a building like this should not have that problem this early.
No. Let me, to, to Mr. Mudd's statement, this facilities group, I didn't know what to expect, and working with Mrs. Craig and the, and the rest of, having the city, the council folks, and my staff together in one room, discussing every, from financials to the building, to the systems, to the future, future business, that's what it was always meant to be, in my mind. Councilman Pierceall says, you, Fred, why is this not done? Why is this not done? Why is it? Well, he's right. And unless we, we have a group, because us as management can only do so much, and then bringing the city in, and then the city staff working together. I, I really believe that's the, the cornerstone and the building blocks to move both the community and the conference center to the next level, and I just want to say thank you.
I, I think that was the intent, as when we changed management, to have a transparent, as much transparency as possible, by having these monthly meetings with the staff of the conference center and the landlord. Because basically, we're the landlord, okay? We're responsible for the facility, you're responsible for certain things, but how do we do it together to make it beneficial and better for everybody? So I, I think it's gonna work, work very well. We, like I said, we had a lengthy meeting, and a lot of discussion on a lot of the data that, that you have in your agenda. But, uh, basically, we accepted the financial and the report as a committee for information only. So it, I don't think we need a vote from this, from the council, because we have no recommendations on item number one. Item number two, oh, is there any other questions for Mr. Julius?
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, sir.
We'll do this next month. Item number two, the web theater building discussion, okay? Staff provided an update to the committee on the status of the web theater, the inventory, everything has been taken care of, as far as locks being changed, and, and the inventory of the, um, property that was in there, what is the city's and what wasn't, and, and the city staff has a wonderful handle on, on that. Myra Nichols is basically in charge of that, right? She did a wonderful job in, in securing the facility in a, in a very professional manner. So, um, the committee voted unanimously to solicit any and all proposals, offers to purchase or offers to lease for the next three or four weeks, and present to the committee at their next meeting on March 4th, 2015. Okay? So it's gonna be, I don't know if the staff has done anything since we've had the meeting, but, uh, then, the meeting will be, the next meeting will be March 4th, and the staff will formalize a proposal to provide to interested parties, and stipulate that offers need to be received by the city within twenty-five to thirty days. Okay? And then, we, after having discussion about all this, and, and what, who had, we didn't know names, but there were nine, eight or nine, uh, prospects that were looking at it. So, uh, Dale Burkett was at the meeting, he attended the meeting, and this is in, this is on page eight-two. And he addressed the committee, okay, after we had had some conversation on what we, how we were gonna deal with the property. And he has offered to pay one hundred thousand dollars above what is owed on the web theater, including interest and taxes. Mr. Burkett requested that this be submitted to city council. So I am just submitting that as information, uh, it's not something that we have to vote on. It's my understanding that we do not have to vote on this. It's just information only. It was just information.
The committee did not make a recommendation, so there's nothing to vote on.
Right.
If he wants to make an offer, and he wants to get back with city staff with regard to doing some math as to what that offer would be based on his statement, we will help him do that, but there is no offer from him at this time.
So y'all haven't heard anything else from him either?
No.
Mr. Gallen?
Councilwoman Craig, um, do we know the value of the property? Is it four hundred thousand dollars that we owe on the, the prop, the loans and stuff? Or...
Yeah, with regard to the value of the property, tax value's just a little bit more than four hundred thousand dollars. And the, the, what we owe on, to the federal government, is a number that's about four hundred and fifty, but we have, or four hundred and eighty thousand, something like that, but we already have two hundred and forty-some thousand dollars in the bank. So the net that we owe is probably around two hundred and thirty thousand, something like that. So, you know, you know, our ownership of this is just like, you know, a house or anything. You've rented it, someone's been paying you. We, he was, the, Mr. Leveki was actually paying us a little more than twice as much as we needed to pay back for the loan. Our loan is a twenty-year loan with, with HUD. His was a ten-year with a balloon to try to, to own it quicker. So we actually have some additional assets. We have those two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So we only really owe a net of about two-thirty, or something like that, but the value of the building is much more than, than, than that. And one of the things that we, I'm sure you discussed, is that through this process, there's upset bid, and we've participated in situations where one person comes in, and then another person comes in. This may get a little complicated, because you may have lease to own, and different, different options, so, but one of the things I think that's very exciting, is that we've gotten some very good, I think, prospects, folks that are in the business and have been in the restaurant business in the region, and they have expressed interest. So hopefully, they will actually get to the stage of making a proposal, and so we'll have some good, good proposals to take a look at, and we'll get a good restaurant over there shortly, and that will help us in the future.
One other question I have is, what is the property tax on that? Do we know what that is, or can we dig that up for next meeting?
There's a payment in lieu of tax. See, because it is not a property, it's city-owned, so there's no technical...
Right, but if someone owns it...
Thirty-six hundred, I think it's thirty-six hundred dollars a year.
Okay.
Is the payment in lieu of taxes.
Based on the tax value. Okay, yes, Mr. Gallen, and Dr. Curlin.
Councilwoman Craig, a question, or maybe this is gonna be something that's gonna be, uh, you're gonna look at on March 4th, or maybe the city staff's doing it now. Have we done up a advertisement where we're going to be offering this for sale, or how are we going? I hope that we're doing more than word of mouth.
What, as this process has moved, in fact, we, we are, Flip's put some words together. We've got some information that Melissa McGee is working on to, to make sure that the proposal, you know, says what we want to say. And also, we want to put a graph, graphic with it, too, because it's quite, it's quite an exceptional building. I mean, it's a historic building, and it has a lot of character to it. But it's funny, in the rest, particularly with these folks that they're involved with restaurants, they know about this building, and it, we, we, they have actually come and walked through it. And the, you know, so we've had a number of these people actually walking through, looking at the kitchen, commenting on what they like and what they don't like, and, and really, for the most part, they're saying, wow, this is really good. This is, this is a very good building.
Thank you.
I defer to...
Yes, sir.
Chair, Chairwoman Craig, I know that I brought this up in the, the committee meeting, and then I think we got off on other subjects, and I never went back to it, but having another real estate kind of wandering mind beside me, we just discussed it again. The city has not done an appraisal on this building, and I, I really recommend that we get an appraisal, because I realize we know what we owe, we know what the tax value is, but we don't know the true market value of this building, and we could very well end up selling it for so much less than we could get for it. I just think we need an appraisal, and do you need a motion from the committee?
How much is an appraisal?
If, if we want to do appraisal, we can go forward with it right away. We need to not let this building sit dark too long. I mean, I think the, in fact, the schedule that is discussed is about as long, I mean, we need to move, but we'd be happy to, if the council wants an appraisal, happy to get an appraisal and have that piece of information for you as well.
Is that a motion?
I, I would... Second.
Yeah, I, I would make the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
But we will get an appraisal, because it was discussed in there.
And then we got off on other things, and...
Right, right, right.
Excuse me, if I can just say, before we get off of that, one thing, and I possibly could be the only person in this room that feels this way, but based on experience, Allah, whoever, I think that there was a point in my career where I promised the Lord, if he would get me out of the rental business, I'd never get in it again. Now, let me tell you something. Let's sell it. Let's don't worry about the roof and the roof leaving out and slipping out during the night. Let's, and how they, how many stakes they sell, and how much liquor they sell. Let's sell it. That's my comment. Go ahead, Ms. Craig.
Well, the very last paragraph on eight dash two, it says, "The committee also requested that staff furnish the restricted uses of the building as per zoning requirements." Because not just, I mean, you know, it doesn't have to be a restaurant. Yes, we'd like to have it as a restaurant, but what else could go in there? Okay? So they're going to, they're working on getting us that information. So, so we will know exactly what, because right now, I think we're just, uh, marketing it as a restaurant, but there could be some other alternatives there. So, uh, I'm not sure.
Well, I want every, certainly everyone to know that, that it, zoning's important, but what Ash Smith may say he's gonna do with it, he could sell to Fort Macatee the next day.
Right.
It's got to go with the property, and you really can't tell people what to do with their property.
And then, um, we had an item number four, railroad right-of-way. Councilman Pierceall just requested a meeting with staff and any council members that would like to be there, to get some additional information and training on the railroad and the abandonment of, abatement of all the railroad tracks and everything. And I think we've all gotten an email from, from Regina requesting to get a date that would be good for anybody that would like to attend. And other than that, um, and, and here again, there's so much information on the conference center in here, and this is what we will be getting for the next... and this is what we will be getting for the next two or three months, so we can start beginning to see some trends. It's a wealth of information. So I would encourage you, if you haven't looked at it, I mean, in depth, when you get some time. Fred has done a great job with giving us social media information and everything like that. So that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Good report, and thank you, Ms. Craig. Okay. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make, I believe he left, Mr. Julius left, but I feel as though this has been the most transparent report or set of reports that we've gotten on the conference center, really, since the conference center has been in existence. You know, we've, you know, it's been up and running. And I think it's going to give us some really good foundational information as we move forward. We can compare progress, lack thereof, and what we need to build up and what we need to maintain. And I, it's real good, I really enjoyed reading it.
I think the only thing that causes a little bit of nervousness with the conference center is coming today, coming up here tonight, is out on the marquee, it said, "Welcome, North Carolina Bar Association." Now, that's going to be, we'll see how the roof is after that. I read it. They do, they didn't get that name for just any reason. Okay. All right, sir, thank you very much, sir. The city attorney's report.
No report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. After that, you. Okay, city manager's report, Mr. Buck.
Mr. Mayor, three quick things. The, on Saturday, we will all spend Saturday together at 8:30. So here, second floor, City Hall. And if you could bring your calendars or some sense of, because one of the items, if you notice, is the budget schedule in April and May, when we want to have meetings, because I know this council gets busy. And so we want to try to set some dates for the future, so if you could have that in mind. Second, we did get the final written notification of $30 million interest-free money for the water plant. So that 30 million and the 5 million together save us $19 million over the life of those bonds. So that's a big hit, and really, very, very, you know, that has, that will make the pressure on the rates much less. And so it's really good. And finally, the City and County Management Association is meeting at Research Triangle Park. That's where they meet every year, winter conference, so that'll be tomorrow and the next day, so I'll be at that. But I'll be in and out, so you can call me, I have my cell phone, so I'll be, in fact, I'll be back here soon, so, you know. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. City council report, Ms. Craig.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
No report.
All right, Mr. Pierceall.
One quick question. In that meeting, when we're talking about the Greenway, because this has come up, too, and I got word that Representative Baumgartner went and toured today. There's been several suggestions with the 321-85 interchange, with what we have with our Greenway going under there, to take the Greenway across Marietta instead of taking it under 85. And I got word today that Representative Baumgartner was taking on a tour, and he favors that, and he's going to suggest it to the MPO, which, you know, I mean, MPO, city, Greenway, it all gets very confusing. But just look at that, is that a possibility, that the Greenway could be taken up over Marietta? Yes, no, whatever, maybe that could be included in this discussion?
Be happy to do that. It's funny, I was talking to Mr. Barclay yesterday, I had a lunch meeting with the development group, and Mr. Barclay and I were talking about that, and actually, we both agree that that would be a wonderful thing if we could. The problem is the width of the bridge, and we had talked to the state about it. You also have to have handicap accessibility, and the ramp itself has to be in such a way that it doesn't, it's not so high that a wheelchair can't work it. But it would be much more pleasurable for anyone that would want to take it to take a bridge over the interstate rather than this convoluted thing with these two tunnels underneath all of this roadway. Now, I have been on Greenways like that, and you can do them, but they're, I'm not sure that they're, that's not the best. And it would be better, but when we talked to the state about this several, a year ago or so, they said, you know, the Marietta Street Bridge is not part of the project. So therefore, if we had to do that, they'd have to start all over again, you know, with their environmental. But if Representative Baumgartner can make things work a little easier or smoother, and there's a possibility, because we've told the state, we're flexible about how, the best way to get the Greenway through, just whatever works best. It doesn't have to be here, it could be over there. We just need a, we need a connection, because there's no connection in the interstate. If you don't get it here, there's no way to get up to Rankin Lake and to the college. So you've got to get it someplace. So let's hope that something will happen.
I just thought maybe we could include that in the conversation, since I can see I'm going to be seeing it again soon. And really, that's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a few things. One, I just want to say congratulations to, oh, you are? Oh, then, fine, no, no, not, nope, 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 I got too much to go. Hold on. Was that the YMCA Award? I want to say congratulations to Marshall Roush. He received an award from the YMCA for outstanding. He was, back in the day, back in 1973, he was the president of the YMCA. And that's what I like so much about our town. I mean, here it is, he's a Jewish man, receiving an award from the Young Christian Men's Association. And he was the president at one time. That's great about this town, Gastonia.
Former city councilor.
And former city councilman, and also Senator, State Senator of North Carolina. I mean, the man done so much. It's just nice. The other thing is Shining Hope Farms, my wife is on the board of directors there, and I advise the board. They had a fundraiser on the 24th of January. They do great work with kids that are, have disabilities, autism and all that. And they raised $13,000, so that was excellent, I'm just really happy. They take any kid, whether they can afford it or not afford it, they can go to Shining Hope Farms. They have two farms, one in Mount Holly, and the other one's out in Charlotte. The other thing is, I was at YMCA, I mean, United Way, and they honored Wicks, which is one of the great corporations here in town. And that is my report, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, Dr. Curl.
Just one thing, the Gastonia J.C.'s attended the state convention this past weekend, which was up in the Raleigh-Durham area, and they received several awards. And one of them was for the project, the Christmas Parade. And I believe the reason they won this award for this year was because of the, you know, relocation of the Christmas Parade to Main Street. And they have also submitted this for a national award, so that's moving forward. So we're really proud of the J.C.'s, they did a great job this year. And so I just want to let you know that they're being recognized, at least at the state level, so.
And let me just ask a question, who's the incoming president?
Well, the incoming president is a young lady who was actually recognized this past weekend as the outstanding vice president for membership for the state, and that's my daughter, Maddie Curl.
Wonderful, wonderful.
But anyway.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
How many members they have?
Not enough. I would say somewhere around 30, and they still are challenged with that. But I was told by several of our members that they were the best-looking group up there in Raleigh.
That'd be important. Councilman Campbell?
No report, sir, thank you. I know, I saw a couple mouths open up there.
Wow, get your camera out.
All right, well, I have, just very briefly, I wanted to, as shy Mr. Gallagher said, we were going to do this together, is we want to officially congratulate Mr. Pierceall. Two reasons, number one, is the past president Realtor of the Year, his past president, wonderful year, fantastic. He brought us out of the recession. All right, second, yeah. Secondly, is you're the new chairman of the, to get out of that, you had to be chairman of the MPO that you referred. But congratulations, we've got a few things we want to talk to you about. We got just a few that rest to talk to you about them, but, okay. I have a letter from Crisis Assistance Ministry, I just got, dated a little while back to Melody. Crisis Assistance Ministry is grateful to the City of Gastonia for continuing to sponsor the Good Neighbor Program, which generates funds to assist low-income City of Gastonia customers with their utility bills. CAM's largest utility expense for clients is to the city, and in 2014, total $80,000, which far exceeds the amount generated by Good Neighbor. The amount that CAM pays to the city is our largest client expense and accounts for 40% of our total client expenditures. As you can see, the funds received by CAM through this program are put to good use. And this is from the longtime executive director, Kathy Howe. So that's a good letter, let's say that. Thank you very much. I think that, unless I've missed something, anything else anyone has at all?
Mr. Mayor, that's the Good Neighbor Program, where people contribute $5, $10 for electricity and stuff like that? Can we have an insert go out to all the people that pay their bills and stuff? Because that is, that's priceless. I mean, I give to this thing all the time, and I just wondered, you know, I never hear what really happens.
We, I think we, you know, we, you know, following that letter, we checked, I think it's $3,400 last year is all we got. So there, we only got $3,400 in that program, and we gave all that to CAM. But as you can see, it's a very small part of what then we get back. So we'll advertise, we've, over the years, we've advertised periodically, but we'll try to hit it again.
I've seen the Good Neighbor Program advertised in the insert, but I think having, you know, kind of a testimonial of what that money was spent for, like Councilman Gallagher said, in the little insert that goes in the utility bill, could go a long way, because, you know, people say, ah, yeah, I get it, what does the city do with it?
Yeah.
That's exactly what the city does with that. Great idea.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
All in favor?